First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, and the clerk will take the roll.
Commissioner Heinrich?
Here.
Commissioner Brassad?
Here.
Commissioner Reinert?
Here.
Commissioner Gomash?
Here.
Commissioner Schulte?
Here.
Commissioner Jepson?
Here.
Commissioner Meisner?
Here.
We're all here today. We'll go down to item number four, which is to consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and the purchase card claims paid for the period ending February 21st, 2025.
Still moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brassad. Do I have a second?
Good.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert?
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Moving to item number five, the approval of minutes from the February 25th, 2025 County Board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Is there any questions, comments, changes anybody might have? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number six is the Chair's remarks today, and we have one item under Chair's remarks, and that is to consider Resolution 2025 PS01, accepting a dedication, excuse me, a dedicated donation from Anoka Masonic Lodge. I'm going to ask Commissioner Brassad, who serves as lead commissioner on our public safety, to tell us more. Commissioner Brassad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my honor to recognize the Anoka Masonic Lodge on its donation to our law enforcement and public safety staff of 40 fire suppression tool units for a total value of $38,000 as part of the Minnesota Grand Lodge and Minnesota Masonic Charities Fire Safety Initiative. Fire suppression tools are used to knock down flames, significantly reduce temperatures by up to 1,000 degrees Fahrenheit within 30 seconds, and cut water usage by as much as 80%. These tools can save lives and property. This very generous donation will greatly aid our department staff by reducing fire damage. County Sheriff Brad Wise will now speak more about the donation, the use of these important tools, and introduce us to our special guests. Sheriff?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners. I appreciate you offering me the opportunity to come speak about the Masonic Lodge and their generous donation. This donation is directly to the sheriff's office rather than fire departments, which of course makes perfect sense in Anoka County, given that we have paid-on-call fire departments in the places that the sheriff's office patrols. So inevitably, when there is a fire, call for services, that the first to arrive on the scene will be a deputy. And for us, currently, we carry fire extinguishers, the deputies carry fire extinguishers. Of course, the limitation is then you have to be in close proximity to the fire. So we're super excited about the idea of this tool being able to be deployed in a fire situation that could actually help suppress the fire while simultaneously lower the risk for our staff. So I think it's really important on a number of fronts. So with that, if you don't mind, I'm going to introduce Greg Vokavan, who is from the Anoka Masonic Lodge. Greg?
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Commissioners. As the sheriff said, my name is Greg Vokavan. I am with the Anoka Masonic Lodge. I am also a member of the Minnesota Grand Lodge. I serve as their senior grand steward, and I act as their fire suppression coordinator for the last two years. The fire suppression tool technology is an aerosolized product. It's actually potassium, and we start a fire inside of this box. It blows the holes out, and it chemically separates the fuel from the oxygen. So it does not deplete the oxygen from the air, and it doesn't contaminate or corrode any of the electronics. It was originally designed by the Israelis and the United States government primarily for submarine. Without computers, you can't surface the ship, and without oxygen, you wouldn't have sailors to sail it. So the fire suppression tool project was introduced by the Grand Lodge of Minnesota about two years ago with a partnership with Minnesota Masonic Charities. You might know of their philanthropic endeavors, the charities endeavors down at the University of Minnesota. They have an award-winning nursing home down in Bloomington, and they distribute dozens of scholarships, high school and college scholarships every year. With their help, this has been nothing short of a success. To date, the program isn't quite two years old. We have donated 500 of these units throughout the state of Minnesota, reaching from Silver Bay to Purim, down into the Pleasant Grove area, all throughout the whole state. We've distributed them. About half of the 115 or so Masonic Lodges have engaged in this project so far. The most notable deployment of those donated units was done about a year ago, 13 months ago, down in St. Paul Park. A Washington County deputy, the day after he was taught how to use it, deployed it in a house fire. Fortunately, no one was home at the time. It did save the structure and the two family pets. I also happen to have with me today members of our committee at the Anoka Lodge. I have Larry, Worshipful Brother Larry Jensen, who is a co-chair. I have John Freiberg, a lifetime Anoka, Anoka County resident, and served as our master 50 years ago. And of course, we have one of your own. Brian is one of your IT engineers and a member of our lodge, and he wanted to be here today, too. And finally, I'd like to introduce the master of the lodge, James Surratt, for a few comments. This is the unit, by the way. On the back, it says it's a dummy unit. It could have said demo, but it's too often. I carry this around, and I go, ah, we see why they gave it to you. So with that, James Surratt, our master.
Thank you, Greg, Sheriff, Commissioner, Board. First, I'd like to say thank you. I'm from Illinois, and we paused during the Pledge of Allegiance, so I appreciate that you also today paused in between the things. Made me feel at home, so I appreciate that. And I apologize, I had to have prepared marks, because if I go off the cuff, we'd be here way longer than you want me. So I'll be looking down to read. I apologize for that. So as Greg mentions, my name is James Surratt, and I'm the current 2025-year master of Anoka Lodge, which, if I can get arranged, we're across the street from Third Street, the Big White House. Hopefully, you all know where we're at. Come over, have dinner sometime on a first Wednesday. We'd love to have you. The Masonic family teaches its members the priority of safety and well-being for themselves and others, and especially those who have chosen to protect us. Fine example right there. For over 165 years, Anoka Lodge and its appendage bodies that meet in our lodge have done just that. One year ago this month, the Anoka Masonic family donated 10 FST units to the Anoka Police Department and three units to the Anoka Champlin Fire Department, and just last month, replaced a unit deployed in an apartment fire, which Greg spoke of. This donation is just another example of the concern we have for our community and the generosity of the Masonic family here in Anoka County and what is seen throughout the fraternity. We hope you will never have to use one of these devices, but if needed, we are assured that it will make a difference. The second phase of our donation efforts is why we're here today in front of you, with an offer to support the Anoka County Sheriff's Department to the count of 40 of these units. If the county accepts this donation, each Commissioner will receive a personal letter from me, it'll be photocopied, and I'll sign it, though, inviting each of you to the donation event once a date has been established. We are optimistic of a Phase III that would work towards the other Anoka County cities like we did in Anoka, that have had their own police and/or fire departments. And we're calling that Phase III, in case you're curious, other people's money or OPM. So look for some stuff out in the county. Washington County has received the most FST units to date from the few lodges in the county, and as Anoka Lodge is the only Masonic Lodge in Anoka, we have a heavy lift and are looking forward to providing as many FST units as needed. Greg and I can leave our talking points, which I have in this fine quality blue folder. I'll leave it right here, or I can give it to the clerk, whichever you prefer. And we can answer any questions that you may have for us at this time. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. Hopefully, I did okay. See, these things make me nervous, and I appreciate it, though, very much. Thank you.
You did great. I do have a question. I'm kind of interested, is this a one-time use that these have? Is that why you were talking about having 40?
Yes, yes, it is. This one I know, Greg. This is the one thing I know. Yes, it is. It's a one-and-done shot. So they pull, it's kind of like a grenade, is what I call it. They pull the pin, they throw it in and explodes, and then the fire department or whoever will clean it up and take it out when it's done. So, yes, one and done.
Does anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Meisner?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, James, you did great on your speech. And thank you, Greg, for actually explaining how it works, because I'm like, is it foam that comes out? But that actually is pretty impressive, the way that it works and the, I guess, kind of technology of the potassium or low technology. I'm not sure which one it is, but the fact that it keeps the oxygen and then helps to maintain computers and such is really great.
The units to address, Commissioner Mike, one and done, 15-year shelf life. So when the sheriff needs more, he knows where to call. We'll work on replacing them. The shelf life is based on the battery, and the cost of replacing the battery exceeds the value in the opening and contaminating the potassium that's in here. For us, in this part of the state, we're not hampered, but maybe International Falls would be, they are only good to 50 below zero Fahrenheit.
Hopefully, be okay. That's right.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Schulte?
Yes.
Is the potassium in a gas state, or is it powder?
Powder.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we aerosolize it with the lithium battery, which is the aging unit. So once the battery, battery's good for about 15 years. What we've done with these is we've taken, and we have a couple of them down in Bloomington, waiting for a test burn down near New Prague, is what we're thinking. The local fire departments down there are wanting to see it work. And several of those guys said, you know what, we got hose salesmen and nozzle salesmen that come, and we want to see it work before we buy them. So they said, you know, before we take these and receive these on a donation, we'd like to see it work. Two of our prominent members of the Masonic fraternity up in the Duluth and Moose Lake area are active fire, retired or currently on the Duluth Fire Department, and we're instructors. In Minnesota, we have a nationally renowned firefighting school up in Duluth. So we paid to simulate a fire. We put two 20-foot containers full of straw OSB two-by-fours, lit one on fire, and we watched it with a thermal imager until it got to 1,200 degrees, and then they put it out with water. We moved to the next one over, did the same thing, lit the same fire. We waited for it to get to 1,200 degrees, deployed one of these, and within 30 seconds, we were down at 200 degrees. It did not extinguish the fire, but it reset the clock for the firefighters to get there to put the fire out. And that's, that video that we did, it was orchestrated and in a training environment at the college, and that is available online. And we also have the camera, the body cam video of the Washington County Sergeant that deployed the unit down in St. Paul Park. The manufacturer and the distributor have a whole lot of test burns. The reason we have the units down in Bloomington and can do this is because they're about to age out. They can't sell them. So this is a just-in-time type product. So the one we gave to the Anoka Champlin Fire Department the other day is a brand-new unit, ready to go for 15 years.
Great, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Sheriff, did you have anything more you wanted to add?
No, other than to encourage you to accept the donation, I guess that would be it. So...
That might be, that might be the easy part. Thank you all for being here, and congratulations to the Anoka County's law enforcement staff on this donation. On behalf of the board, I'd also like to sincerely express our gratitude to the Anoka Masonic Lodge for its donations, very generous, and its dedication to helping keep our law enforcement staff safe. At this time, I'd like to move, offer, and offer Resolution 202533. We had a misprint at the top of the page where I said it was PS01. Sorry about that, but it is 202533, accepting the donation from the Anoka Masonic Lodge and ask my fellow commissioners to join me in support. So, without further ado, no other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We really appreciate what you've done. It's great. And we will now move down to our, yes, thank you, committee as a whole, and we'll start with the management committee, Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee of the Whole for Management, we did meet on Tuesday, February 25th, in this building. There were no people for public comments, but I do always accept them via email at mandy.meisner@anokacounty.mn.gov. There were no public comments via email either. So the first and only item on the consent agenda, which we will all ratify today, is a travel request. This is for Benjamin Hamel. He will be doing some training and conferencing for property records and taxation. You can see the dates and some of the details there, but I will go ahead and move this.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Signify, Commissioner Jepson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is roll call vote.
Commissioner Reinert?
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Informational items, Commissioner Meisner?
Yes, Mr. Chair, for the informational items that day, we did recommend the following to be approved, and this was for a tentative agreement between the county of Anoka and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 49, representing the Highway Parks Maintenance Unit for the calendar years of 2025 through 2027. That was a three-year union contract that did actually move directly to the board, and that was already attended for. So I, with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. We'll move down to the Transportation and Parks Committee recommendations, and we've got consent items, and we'll take those first, and we'll go start with Commissioner Jepson from Highway on her two consent items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Transportation and Parks Committee met on Thursday, March 6th, at 9:30 a.m. All commissioners attended, except Commissioners Reinert and Brassad. There were two items only on the consent agenda. The first one is approval of Contract C-0011447 in the amount of $946,595 to Egan Company for nine traffic control signals that will interconnect the system to operate under coordination and help improve traffic flow. The nine intersections are throughout the cities of Andover, Blaine, Coon Rapids, and Lexington. The second and final item on the consent agenda is awarding Contract C-0011380 to Lundt Construction Company in the amount of $15,890,326.33 for planned improvements along 44th Avenue from East River Road and Main Street in the city of Fridley. And before we move those to, to vote on, I would like to pull that second item from the consent agenda to discuss separately.
Okay, so we'll take, we'll take a motion on item number one?
I'll move that.
Okay. And do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved on second on item number one. Any discussion, this consent item, all in, oh, this roll call vote.
Commissioner Gomash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. So we'll move item two, should we move that down to informational, so we can get done with the other consent items? So that'll be, item number two will be the first one, Commissioner, under Highway informational.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll move down to Parks for Commissioner Reinert, and he's got one under consent.
Yeah, one item for you folks to consider today, and this is to consider recommending approval to enter into Contract Number C-0010992B. It's Amendment Number Two with Rachel Contracting in the amount of $229,000, $229.54 for the Bunker Hill Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Improvement Project. Let's see. Yeah, the above additional costs are within the allocated project budget of $41, $4,100,000, leaving the project contingency balance at $685,000. And I'll move that.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reinert, second by Commissioner Schulte. This is roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert?
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Now, we'll move back down to informational items. We'll go back to Highway under Commissioner Jepson. If you, Commissioner Jepson will go to item number two with some discussion, I'm sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to pull this, pull this off of the agenda because it's a significant difference in how we usually go about things. There is a significant increase in the cost of this project, and just making sure that we're full transparency, full understanding amongst ourselves, the staff, and especially the public in why there's such a change in, from the engineer's estimate to the actual awarded bid amount, which I hope we can get to following this discussion. So, so we, as a transportation committee as a whole, had a very robust conversation during last week's meeting, discussing the reasons behind the higher-than-expected bid amounts of approximately 31%. As mentioned during earlier reports that I've given, this project is extremely unique and possesses potential risks to the winning bidder. Some of those include challenges when only working on top of the bridge deck. They cannot, BNSF is not giving permission to be on their property, so you can't go from the bottom up. You have to go from the top down, meeting county-imposed timelines because of previously mentioned challenges, the need for containment systems during the bridge deck removal, and discovering unknown deterioration once the bridge deck has been removed. So Joe McPherson, our county engineer, has come up, and I wanted Joe specifically to address the other options besides approving of this bid and what the implications of not approving the bid could be based on those options. So with that, I would like to pass the microphone on to Joe to answer some of those questions.
Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, and fellow commissioners. My name is Joel McPherson. I am the chief officer of transportation and county engineer, and I think the commissioner did a great job of laying out some of the difficulties with this project. It is extremely unique. I like to equate it to building a bridge over the Minneapolis Airport, if you can imagine doing that, with airplanes running underneath the bridge you're trying to, trying to build. Very difficult project. This particular project, as you can see on the screen here, has 26 rail lines underneath it. When it was originally constructed back in the early '70s, there were only two lines there. And so the BNSF group there knew that they wanted to expand that into their rail yard and become a main hub for their operations. So at that time, there were agreements in place and agreements that took place between the cities of Fridley and Columbia Heights, as well as Anoka County and BNSF. BNSF built the bridge on their own dime and then transferred ownership to Anoka County, and that became our new alignment for Casatu that you see today. You can kind of see on the screen there 43rd Avenue, which used to be the old at-grade crossing. So it used to be on the ground. You crossed over those two or three tracks at the time, and that was it. So time's gone by. We're at the point now where we need to do something with the bridge. And over the last couple of years, our team has been working closely with a consultant, TKDA, to put plans and specs together to rehab the bridge deck, essentially replace it. We're going to pull it out and put it back in. To add to some more of the difficulty with this project, this has stay-in-place metal forms on the bottom side of the deck, so it's impossible to go under the deck to actually get in there and visually inspect the condition of the concrete deck that's there today. It kind of acts as a bathtub, if you can think about that. The steel stay-in-place forms, they helped with the construction portion of the project and the staging, but now that they're still there, you can't see that bottom. So all of our inspections are from the top. We do know that the bridge deck is cracked over time, and it needs to be replaced. And so that's the point we're at today. So as Commissioner Jepson had mentioned, when we got the bids back, we were also very shocked. We were surprised to see how high they came in. When we put the bid proposal together and we put our engineer's estimate together, originally, we were thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million, but our team did inflate the numbers, understanding the risk that was involved with this project and for a successful delivery. So they inflated it to about 12.1 million and added some costs in to account for that. Again, we were very shocked when we saw it come in at almost $16 million with the low bid, and then the second bidder was at 18.4, which is another $2.5 million higher. So seeing that, we knew that there was a lot of risk in here. We knew that there was a lot that the contractor had to bite off on to do this project. So getting to the brass tacks of this thing, doing our due diligence, we wanted to step back and say, let's make sure we do the right thing. Let's make sure we give our board all the information that they can possibly get to make a decision on how to move forward on this. So we looked at five options, one of them being to reject all bids and do nothing, leave the bridge as it is today. Obviously, that's not a very valid option that we can look at, because, one, the bridge deck is in a condition where it needs to be replaced. Over the course of the last couple of years, there's been cases where concrete chunks have fallen off the bottom of the deck, the parts that aren't encapsulated with that stay-in-place form, and they've, fortunately, they haven't hit anybody or hit any equipment down below, but that could happen. So that's a big concern. Something has to be done. So option one's off the table. Option two, we looked at, do we really need to put a bridge here? Do we need to maintain this bridge here? Are there other options that we can look at, potentially neighboring corridors that can handle the traffic that goes over this bridge? We evaluated that. We looked at an origin/destination study. Essentially, what that means is you look at, where is the traffic coming from and where does it want to go? And we also reached out to the emergency medical services, first responders, and talked to them, reached out to staff at the city of Fridley. They heavily depend on this bridge to get from one side to the other. As you can imagine, 26 active rail lines here. From time to time, there's emergencies that happen along this track, and so with that, emergency responders depend on this bridge to get from one side to the other, depending on where those emergencies are. And so additionally, looking at the traffic volume, there's approximately 6,000 cars on this roadway a day, which is a pretty substantial amount in this area. We do know that the city of Fridley recently secured funding to build a new bridge over the BNSF Railroad that would be located north of 694, approximately a mile and a half north of where this bridge exists today. That is not constructed as of today, so if we were to choose to knock this bridge down and remove it, that's something that traffic would have to reroute to other corridors on. The other thing that comes into effect here, as Commissioner Jepson had mentioned, removing this bridge would be just as difficult as rehabbing the bridge. We'd have to do everything from the top now. We wouldn't be allowed to park on the railroad tracks, wouldn't be able to place a crane down there and that type of thing. So we'd have to very strategically pull the bridge apart and remove all of that. And again, that's at the county's cost, based on past agreements. So with that, that estimated cost is anywhere from 16 to 20 million dollars just to knock the bridge down. So we looked at that and said, well, that's giving up an opportunity to have another 40 to 50 years of useful life on this bridge, and so that was an option that we, we kind of set to the side. The third option is reject the bids and explore some recent rust staining that we're seeing on the top side of the deck. So on a lot of decks, the way they are constructed, you've got your, your structural concrete that has all your rebar in it, has all your structural steel, that's placed on the deck, and then they put a wearing course on top of that. Being Minnesota, we know that our decks take a lot of abuse throughout the year, whether it's that freeze-thaw cycle, abuse from vehicles. So there's a wearing course on the top of the deck. We're starting to see rust staining coming up back through there. And so, not to get too far in the weeds, but essentially, that's a sign that water is infiltrating the deck, and it's actually coming back up, because it's not percolating through the deck and dripping out the bottom. Those stay-in-place forms are acting as a bathtub, so they're holding that water in there, and it's causing the water to come back out through the top. Not a good situation for a bridge deck. So this option three, if we were to reject the bids, we'd have to dig into those areas and see how degraded the bridge deck is, how far does that degradation go, and what would be the, the result of that? would be the, the result of that. Additionally, if we were to go that route, we'd potentially lose $5 million in funding that's been secured for this project, which we really want to try and avoid. Option four is reject bids and then rebid this fall. With that, there's a number of issues similar to the previous item. We know that we still need to do something to the deck, so we need to rebid it, but with all of the changes with federal funding at the federal level and then the funding mechanisms we have today, and then the potential for some of the tariffs that are being implemented, we know that contractors are telling us, and industry is telling us, steel prices are going to go up anywhere from 20 to 25% in the next few months. So even as we met with our, the lowest responsible bidder here, Lundt, when we talked to them, you could tell they were very nervous about the pricing that's coming out. This is a large bridge, it's a quarter mile in length, it's one of the largest bridges in Anoka County. I think it's within feet of being tied for number one or two. With that being said, there's a, there's a large risk in pushing this out to the fall and trying to rebid this project. And additionally, we know there's inflation going on. If we do do that, that pushes the bridge construction to next year, so it wouldn't happen until 2026, so that would add additional costs there. So the last one that we looked at was awarding the bid. Recognizing that this is a large increase in cost, it was not budgeted for this project. We have a budget of 13 and a half that we set aside for this project. This was an option that we looked at and took very careful consideration for. The benefits of this option is, we move forward, we've already done the bidding process, we are currently working with BNSF to try and secure some additional time and come up with more concrete times that the contractor can actually perform their work. One of the inherent risks that the contractors had to deal with on this project is, BNSF, it's difficult for them with 26 active tracks down there to, to give a hard timeline as to when a contractor can work. They can't just blanketly say contractor can be out here working from 7:00 AM till 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and they can have, they can just have at it. That's not the case. It has to be very strategic on the lines they're working on, and if a train comes through, and as you guys know, there's a lot of different chemicals and things that are hauled on those trains, you can't actively work over a train that's going underneath the deck. So with that being said, we've been working closely with BNSF to address some of those inherent risks. We know that the bridge deck needs to be replaced, that's been proven through our design team and our evaluation of this, so that, that is something we have to deal with, that's a reality. And additionally, we don't have that inherent risk of rejecting these, going again out this fall and potentially paying even more money for costs that are associated with the steel increases, material cost increases, and also resource demands that are out there in the market right now. So, long story short, we are recommending moving forward with option five, which is awarding the bid. We do realize this is a big change, it's not something we took lightly, and we appreciate the board's consideration. As Commissioner Jepson mentioned, we did have a very robust conversation about this. I'm proud of our team, they did a lot of work on this. We met with the consultant, the contractor, BNSF numerous times to talk about the risks with this job, to ensure that we can get it built and move forward. So it's about as good of a situation as you can. It's kind of like doing heart surgery blindfolded on this thing, but we're going to move forward on this project, it needs to be done, so we appreciate your support. I'll turn it over for any questions or if you have any comments you'd like to make.
Thank you, Joe. I know that we had a lot of long, good, long conversations, so Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and yeah, thank you, Commissioner Jepson, for pulling this because this is a very complicated project, and we talked about this in the meeting as well. I mean, probably this is going to be, continue to be more expensive than what we predicted. Part of it, too, was the, the steel beams that you were talking about, right? So 50 years ago, they didn't coat them, so when you're talking about operating blindfolded once we do pull up that deck, who knows what we're going to find, probably not, not good things. So I do appreciate this, I will be supporting this because, as you mentioned today, and then also in the meeting, you did walk through all of those options very thoroughly. This is the most responsible thing to do, even though it is expensive, but that is primarily out of our control.
Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Joe, how would the, the amount that's over what we had budgeted, where's that coming from?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that was the next thing I realized I forgot to mention. So what we're going to do is to stay within our approved budget for 2025. We are planning to reduce the amount of work we're going to do on our overlay program this year by approximately $4 million. And the reason we're doing $4 million, like I said, we had budgeted 13.5, and if we add $4 million to that, that puts us at 17.5, which gives us about $1,000,000 of additional cushion on this project. As Commissioner Meisner mentioned, we don't know what we're going to unveil when we pull this bridge deck off, so there may be some additional work. But to offset that cost and to make sure we come in within the approved budget, we're going to reduce our overlay program by $4 million, so.
Follow-up, does that leave, so what projects undone does that leave, and how bad is that going to be?
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair.
Are they in my district? Sorry, I missed the conversation.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, you're exactly right, they're all in your district, we appreciate you taking the heat on that. No, we actually, we look strategically around the county, there are some projects that need to be done. We know Highway 65, the big reconstruction project, is coming up in 2026, so we really only have one year to get those projects ready. So we didn't want to impact those projects, but the ones that we did pull off are County Road 10, which is next to, just east of the North Town Mall, essentially from just west of 65 to the East County line. That stretch is in rough shape, but it's something that we felt doesn't impact the other projects we have going on around the county, and it's something we can put off for one year. So these will move out one year. The section, the second project is Main Street, or our County Road 14. So just east of Main Street, this summer, we're going to be having the active three-lane expansion project from Hanson Boulevard up to Round Lake Boulevard. So being as that's under construction, another element we took into effect is, do we really want to have a construction project going on adjacent to that to add to the impact? So there's a stretch between the bridge over Highway 10 to our land bridge that we repaired a couple of years ago. That stretch of pavement needs to be rehabbed, we're going to push that out one year, and that should be fine. And then the last one is County Road 36, our county stated Highway 36, which is up in Linwood Township. Unfortunately, that one drew the short straw, so Commissioner Reinert, I know that's one that may come up this afternoon, we're going to push that out to 2026, but that is essentially from the East County line in that northeast corner, all the way up to the North County line, we're just going to push that out for one year, so.
Commissioner Brassad.
Follow-up. Any concerns with the lowest bidder?
Yeah, so, so Madam Chair, or sorry, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we've had, we've worked with them on past projects, and we've had concerns on past projects. This is a completely different team on this project moving forward, it's a whole new group of individuals we're working with. They are a reputable company in the industry, and so with that, we feel comfortable with what's been proposed. We are, we have hired TKDA, they're going to have two bridge inspectors onsite at all times to monitor how the project goes, how the work goes. We're going to be monitoring the schedule and how work progresses on this project to ensure that it continues to move forward. I do know the project you're referring to in the past, that is something we talked in depth about at the Transportation Committee meeting and some of the concerns with that, and we feel that we have things in place this time to help alleviate some of those risks. So we do feel as comfortable as we can moving forward on this tough project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I know Commissioner Schulte had brought that up during our discussion regarding the contractor, so we had a good discussion. Yes?
Just real quick, I, thank you, Mr. Chair, just wanted to thank you, Joe McPherson, for your detailed explanations and very helpful in, in committee for myself and I'm sure the other commissioners to understand the difficulties of this project. Aside from just the, the overlay projects being pushed back to 26, I think you had mentioned, you know, on this one, the pendulum swung hard in, in one direction where it came in over what we had budgeted for, but I think you had mentioned there are some other projects where we had budgeted more that we actually received bids that are lower, so just wanted to say there is some good news sometimes. This one, the pendulum swung hard the other direction, but thank you for your detailed and thorough explanations.
Mr. Schulte.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Joe, Joe and his team, and TKDA, and my fellow commissioners for indulging me for our conversation at the Transportation Committee, and I'm sure my fears will be allayed when the contractor finishes this on time and under budget, because I'm confident they will. But again, thank you for the conversation, and thank you for everything you're going to do to mitigate the risk in this intensely complex project.
And when we had these discussions and the five options you had, we had pretty good back and forth as to what about this, what about that? So it was good to hear all the options before we got to the end, but you know, the fact that it's going to, that we have to, if we decide that the bridge is going to come down, being, BNSF has made it clear that that's our responsibility. They're not going to allow us to leave it up and not use it. They had said, if you're not going to use it, you're not going to fix it, you're taking it down. So that was pretty well explained to us, and the cost of that is even more than what the construction costs is to fix it. So that, that, that kind of got eliminated. We talked a little bit about possible other uses, pedestrian bridge, things like that. Doesn't make a lot of sense in how much money we're going to still have to put into it to fix it. As you indicated, cement is falling off, and that's something we have to do something about. So we had some good conversations, so, you know, and then obviously, the rejecting the bids issue pushes things back, and just in the state that we're in right now with, with the tariff issues and stuff, we're talking about increases of possibly 25%, even as, as close as next, as the upcoming fall. So it, it made sense that we move on this and move as quickly as we, we can. Commissioner Reinert.
What's the anticipated life expectancy of this bridge then, going forward? How many years before you'd have to throw some more money into it?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that was, that was another thing we discussed. I appreciate you bringing that up. So typical bridge life today, when you design a new bridge, it's anywhere from 75 to 100 years. This bridge is approximately 50 years old, being constructed in 73, and so our life expectancy for these repairs would be another 40 to 50 years on this bridge. So that was part of that evaluation we looked at, is it, should we pay 16 to 20 million right now to tear it down? Or should we put that 16 to 20 million, whatever happens, put that into it now and get another 40 to 50 years out of it? Not to say there won't be some future maintenance we have to do on it, but get another 40 to 50 years of use out of it. And I, I will throw a shout out to whoever my successor is in 50 years, I apologize on this, this was a gift that we, we accepted 50 years ago, and so if they watch this, watch this video in the future, I apologize now.
It's an expensive asset.
It's very expensive.
And I think, Joe, you had indicated that TKDA has looked the entire bridge and looked at the, everything going down underneath the top, and everything is, is solid. We're not really going to be doing much of a repair. Everything is basically taking care of the top where the rust is coming through and making sure the cement doesn't keep falling off the actual bridge deck.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, to that point, you're correct. Everything that we can see below, so the steel beams, they look to be in great shape, they're, they're in good shape. The piers, we are going to infill the piers. Right now, they kind of have the columns look to them, kind of like Highway 10 when they made that report, repair before they removed the Fourth Avenue Bridge. They came in and they filled the piers with concrete and structural steel to support those. We're going to be doing the same thing here, so we'll solidify those, we're going to replace some of the bearing pads that are out there that hold the beams up on top of the piers. But the part we don't know yet is, those stay-in-place forms, they are welded and attached to the top flange of that I-beam, so the top of that I-beam, that flange right there is the part we don't know what condition that's in until we remove the concrete and get to it. That may be where some additional costs come in, where we have to come in and weld some additional steel, make repairs, but to your point, yes, the beams themselves look very good.
Mr. Schulte.
Joe, final thought from me, I don't think you need to worry that anybody will be driving 50 years from now. Speed of change in technology, I'm pretty sure that bridge, if it's there, will be used for pedestrians only.
That makes me feel a little better.
So we are going to have flying cars.
I don't know that there'll be cars.
All right. And we have a motion in a second, correct?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Move by Commissioner Schulte, seconded by Commissioner Meisner? Okay. So we have a motion in a second, any other discussion before we go to a roll call vote? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Jepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Joe, for all the details. Oh, Commissioner Jepson.
So, yeah, just, I mean, thank you to Joe and his team for all of that and for having this conversation up here. I think it's very important to make sure that we communicate the extent of our conversation and decision-making rather than just rubber stamping this important project, and I did have one more informational item.
Yep, informational items, Commissioner.
Yes. So the county engineer, we discussed the county engineer negotiating contract C 0011437, which is a joint powers agreement with the city of Now Then for roadway reconstruction at Bow Street between 181st Avenue Northwest and Viking Boulevard. More information and approvals to come before us on this project, but we anticipate to advertise for bids the winter of '25, '26, with construction commencing in the spring of '26 for this project. So with that, Mr. Chair, I, my Transportation Committee report is complete.
Okay, we'll move back to Commissioner Reinert with Parks, and the informational items, Commissioner Reinert.
Yeah, and there's a few, I guess at this point I'd invite Anoka County Parks Director, Jeff Perry, come up to the mic and give a short report on those items.
Welcome, Mr. Perry.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Jeff Perry, Park Director for Anoka County. The only item that I'd like to quickly touch on would be the annual report from 2024, and we had just under 6 million visitors last year in 2024, so the park use visits are escalating definitely every year, so we are anticipating well over 6 million visitors this year in 2025. In terms of building the customer experience, we had just under 11,000 camping nights, about 2.5 million social media website impressions, we had over 26,000 rounds of golf played at Chomney Golf Course, and at Bunker Beach, we had about 105,000 visitors at Bunker Beach Water Park. In terms of sustaining the park system, we were the recipients of about 11.5 million dollars in grant funds, and in terms of protecting natural resources, we removed just under 1,000 hazard trees. We had over 4,000 aquatic invasive species inspections through our AIS program, and we burned over 200 acres in native prairie as well. So with that, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that was just a quick overview of the accomplishments in 2024.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Reinert, do you have anything more?
Nope, rest information is, no.
Okay, any other questions for Commissioner, or Mr. Perry? I know that, you know, we were mourning a little bit after our Andover High School hockey team, boys hockey team, lost to Stillwater, but we'll get them, we'll get them next year, maybe. All right, thank you. Moving down to, let's get back to the agenda here, and we're on item number eight. Consider adopting the 2025 Anoka County Strategic Leadership Plan and Outcomes Summary. This is, we have, we're going to consider adopting the program that we've started, the county board and the staff leadership participated in a strategic planning session, sessions on January 28th, and then again on February 10th. County Board reviewed the outcomes of these, of those sessions on February 25th, which included reviewing and updated vision, overarching principles, strategic principles, short-term goals, and other opportunities. That discussion was summarized by administration, is attached and requested to be adopted by county, by the county board as Anoka County Strategic Plan. I'm going to turn it over to our county administrator, Jim Dickinson, but I want to thank him for putting that together. I thought it was, those two meetings were well attended by everybody, we had staff was there, that was staff leadership that was there that helped a lot to focus on certain issues within their areas that we needed to consider and, and go through, and the person doing the leadership there did a great job. I thought we had some, you know, a couple hours of good discussion and a lot of participation from everybody, so I was very happy with that, and I think we came up with a really good plan. But I'll turn it over to you, Jim, and you can kind of walk us through some of what you have here. But I'll turn it over to you, Jim, and you can kind of walk us through some of what you have here.
Sure, I got a couple of things to kind of touch, touch base on here and some comments that I received from some of the commissioners. So I will offer some amendments to what you do have. But for the most part, one thing to kind of really keep in mind going through this process is it really sets in place a roadmap framework for your staff to go forward. It really gives me an idea, what are your priorities? Where should we be focusing our time and effort? So what we do have here and, which I, one correction I guess I would like to make is on the first page where it says Strategic Leadership Plan, I think we should call that framework. And the reason I say that for framework is I get to the bottom where I have the recommendation is, once this is adopted, we'll focus on putting together some real detailed plans. So calling it a plan, it's not the plan, it's the framework for us to go forth and administer those types of plans. But through that, again, what I was getting feedback and going through the process, one, I want to thank the board for participating and also the senior staff that also participated in that process. People certainly felt comfortable to be able to offer suggestions. And even after something is at this point, they still were willing to offer comments to try and make it better. And that's what I appreciate through the process, that people are willing to have that level of dialogue and understand that just, it's not, something's not etched in stone, and that's how we're going to work when we go forward. As we get going into the next step, one of the things when we talk about short-term goals, these are things that as a, as a county, we can accomplish in the next three to five years. And one of the, the very first goal that the, the board did land on was maintaining and managing a workforce system and strategy. Really, that's about retaining and attracting good staff, developing succession plans, being market competitive, then also working on internal and external employee-related items, which that be communication, training, morale, et cetera. That's a top priority for this board and something that we will need to be working on. The next top goal is a safe and suitable jail and parking facility for Anoka County. We have the board on, onboard with that. One modification that was suggested relative to resolve issues with the city, that's really about resolve the design and location issues with the city. And that's all part of the application process. We work through land use and those types of things. But I would make that modification on resolve issues. I would say resolve design and location issues with the city by the end of 2025. The next item would be improve the budget process. I do recall I had two Xs in there going through the process, and it was heard loud and clear that I better make that one X. That has been identified and improve the budget process. And one thing that we'll be putting into place is some design guidelines. And by doing so, that will give us clear direction in working with divisions and departments as we go through the budget process as to where this board has an expectation to see that first budget presented. The next item is modernize communication. This goes into how we communicate with the public, how we communicate internally, and to make sure that we do a better job of that and that we're getting timely information out there, quality information, and things that helps people understand what the county is doing. The next goal is to develop a data strategy for digital transformation. It gets into what we talk about, digital roadmap, data roadmaps, and then also putting in place some key performance indicators so we can make sure that we're making progress. Technology is really kind of here to stay, and we need to embrace it and find the proper path going forward. I kind of use this as one thing, we don't necessarily need to be on the cutting edge. Maybe if we're on the bleeding edge of technology, maybe that's where we need to be. But at the same time, it's something we need to embrace going forward. Next item, which was a top item for the board, was connect Anoka County Zale relationship. That 20-year relationship, we're in our last renewal. So in five years, we need to identify what's the next step. So we'll work with our current partners, which are cities, school districts, and some of our higher education areas. We need to make sure that we work on making sure we got a good transition plan there. Number seven is modernize contract, county contract administration. One being embraced by your county attorney's office and also all your departments out there. So we have a better handle on all the contracts, puts us in a better situation for contract negotiations and compliance as we go forward. And the last item was increase recycling and waste management. These are relative to goals to be able to reduce our proverbial footprint. You would say relative to waste. We need to do a better job, and there'll be some expansion with the household hazardous waste facility. And then we also need to work on how we deal, deal with the organics collection out there within the county. A couple of last items that's on your list is, we call those opportunities. I just covered our top eight, but then we also have other opportunities. We'll fill in the gaps, which will be working on our lobbying efforts, reduce crashes and fatalities toward zero deaths, modernize our facilities and workspaces, eliminate at-grade intersections on Highway 65, which we've got a strong start. That'll continue. We'll also look at county and community critical infrastructure vulnerability. Make sure that we have a good identifier out there as to where this county is, not just our facilities, but also the delivery of utilities within the county. And last is make a concerted effort to understand our county demographic changes. All that is put together as what we're going to do in the next three to five years. The overarching aspect of this is the county mission. A slight change, yet quite succinct, will be a commitment to excellence through collaborative efforts. We seek to improve lives and serve with care, integrity, and professionalism. That is what was identified as the mission. Values stay the same. Respect, respectful, innovative, and fiscally responsible. They're good. It's not just me not wanting to change the letterhead. It's also they're good, solid values. Getting into our strategic principles, the top items are public safety, transportation, community services, workforce, communication, that's internal, external, and digital experience and livability of Anoka County. So with that, I would stand for questions. Otherwise, I'd look for the board to accept that, that framework. I won't call it a plan, I'll call it a framework. And time to get to work.
All right, sounds good. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Meisner, I can see your hand ready to go.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, yes, I do approve the amendment. Thank you. I'm going to sound redundant, but I do think it is worth commenting again. I know our chair said thank you, you have said thank you. But the fact that staff leadership was there was really important to me for myself. I just work in partnership with staff. It was really wonderful. I personally love this kind of stuff where we can talk openly, talk about a vision. So I am just extremely grateful and excited. I do have one question, though, Mr. Administrator, of the things that you had just said. For number three, for the improved budget process, and you, you had said like you, you had feedback to take out the two Xs under commit to a 1X% of gross tax levy. So my, okay, this is my question and my comment.
Are you locked in? No.
That, thank you, because that is exactly where I was going with that. I think strive is great, but in terms of commit to a single-digit gross tax levy, I could not get behind that simply because I cannot predict the future and I do not want us to be in a budget deficit situation. So, but you said I'm not locked in, even though it says commit.
It's a goal.
I mean, I don't know, can we?
And we're going to, we will have.
Should we change our word to strive?
We'll have more discussion on really your budget guidelines, which are going to be more important. These are goals, and they're three-term goals. And one item at the end of three years is we certainly want to be in a single digit. This year, I think, you know, it's, could be, it's a hopeful. Is it a lofty goal? I don't know with what's going on at the legislature. But in it, for the main part, this is three years. This is for three to five years, and that certainly would be our goal in three years that we're not looking at double digits.
Just a follow-up comment on that. Okay, I can, I can live with the word commit, but I'm just also, for the record, I would prefer the word strive or even goal, like you said, because even though three years, I agree with you that that is something that I would like to see happen. Given what the landscape is today, though, I, who knows? But I can live with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Schulte.
Mr. Chair, I'd move we adopt the 2025 Anoka County Strategic Leadership Framework and Outcomes Summary as amended.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Reiner. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Okay. Now, again, I want to thank you, Jim, for putting this together. I think it helped bring the, the board closer together, and that's great because we had two good meetings that we were all kind of participate, we were all participating in and along with our staff, which, again, I want to thank them all for their participation. It was really nice to have them there because kind of walk us through the details if we had any questions regarding anything that had come up. So it's good to have them there, and they just did, they did a fantastic job as well. But I appreciated the time that we had spent, or were able to spend together, and I did think that it helps bring the board together, focusing on this very, very important issue of strategically what we're, where we're headed to. So, so with, we have a motion and a second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We, that looks like we, that's all we have for today. We are going to have public comment period, I believe. I'll, I'll check with the clerk after, but otherwise, we got HRA management starting in 7/7/2, and we'll start that in about probably five minutes. Otherwise, the board's adjourned.